Mr. Wagner.
Closing comments, sir?
Two. One is complicated and the other one is even more complicated. So, the, I haven't had a complicated one for awhile. The first one is, my district is facing, a city in my district is, it's an issue that's getting very interesting. The homeless issue in downtown Daytona Beach has, in my opinion, reached a massive boiling point. They're now, I would consider, an unspoken war, if some would even consider it spoken. I haven't seen this level in my seven years thus far. This is the first time I've seen, kind of, two sides reacting in a way that's, I see it only in getting worse. For example, bathrooms are closed for construction on City Island that have continued to be open for as long as I can remember them being there. And then conveniently, they're open during the flea market. So, I'm seeing things that are worrying me. I understand the city of Daytona Beach has to do things to, that a city should do to help or to combat an issue, whatever it may be, and I hate to use the word combat, because I have a different philosophy when it comes to homelessness than quite a few people. The issue that we're facing, and the issue that I'm seeing, is it is, it is a county issue. I've always said it's a county issue. Daytona's dealing with the Daytona issue, and I think they bear the brunt of it, because a lot of the shelters, the places where people can get food are located in that area. So, you have this constant battle. The issue we're having is now we have that bathroom closed, the City Island bathroom is even more of the shower bath than it even was before. The 250 building on Beach Street's bathroom, been there many a times, it's hard on staff, on all levels, and our employees. But, we're becoming part of the issue more than just the global county issue. We are now part of the, we are in the mix, as far as our facilities. 250 is becoming what we, you would consider a safe haven, a safe space, because of the sidewalks and how homeless can be arrested under the city code. I don't know what to do. I think, you know, that there is massive amounts of feces in the streets, because people don't have a place to go to the bathroom. There's high crime, I mean, it is, it's a bad situation. The only thing I can think of, because you have the business communities reaching out to me as well on Beach Street, because they're, people are having a hard time going, they're shopping, because they're complaining of how aggressive the situation's gotten. The only thing I can think of is trying to, try to pull a little off of Beach Street. The only facility I can think of is the Votran bus station, because it closes down at night, we're not running all night long. But unless we have some sort of bathroom somewhere open, we're going to continue to have feces all over the place. People gotta go, they gotta go. The only one on Beach Street's gotta be somewhere. I think the discussion for me has gotten to the point of, you know, we talk about the Volusia Safe Harbor, we talk about doing those things, I think we need to continue that discussion. But until we start talking about doing something now, that boiling point is getting to a level that I feel very uncomfortable, and it's toxic. So, I don't know what a short-term solution can be. If it's bringing portalets to the 250 building and put them on, putting them in the back, rather than having feces all over the side of the building, I think it's a better use, personally. But just ignoring it is gonna be a problem. I talked to Jim about this already, about the 250. It's a complicated situation, but if you don't provide a bathroom, they're going to go to the bathroom. So, I don't know what we do, unless you just want to start arresting every single person. But guess what? That's more expensive, because our budget pays for the jail, which in essence is the problem, because everyone that arrests homeless people, they don't pay for it. And if there was a way to put in the ordinance, that if they arrest someone, we should start being on a charge, but to my understanding is that would be illegal. So, I don't know what we do.
Josh, it's interesting, we were out on the left coast, the west coast, in Oregon and Seattle for quite awhile, and I saw something out there that caught my attention, and my brother lives out there in the Portland area, and I asked him about it. Their portable shower facilities. Pardon me?
Like a RV?
Yes, yeah, yeah, like an RV, like an RV. They weren't necessarily that big, but I, some of them were, but they were movable. And it gave the population that needed it the ability to shower, the ability to take care of themselves personally, and it has worked really, really well. I don't know if that's the answer, but I would be willing to look at the feasibility or something like that, only, but here's, here's my thing, and I've been watching this bubble too, and I've been watching social media, I, the temperature in this thing's getting very hot. Only to the extent that the city partners and hits code enforcement with a vengeance, because that's the weak, the weak point. I gotta tell you, I stopped, I forget where we were, I think I told you, Mr. Manager, I was coming from the Oceans, I think the Ocean Center, coming back to Delano, was going through Daytona, and stopped at a gas station. And I have to tell you, for the first time in my life, I was scared. It to the point, and I needed gas. I was running on fumes, I told you that, Jim. I called you, I said, "You wouldn't believe what just happened." So, I pulled, repositioned my vehicle, so it's at the front of the pump there, so I could get out, if I had to, literally. As soon as I got out of my vehicle, I started to get surrounded, literally. And I told them, "Do not come near me, do not come near me." Grabbed my cell phone, and I mean, this is broad daylight, this is at nighttime. Who do you call for that? It has to be code enforcement. So, we have to be careful that we're not, there's a need, but there's also, we have to hit a balance. I don't know what that is, but you're right. And I'm willing to look at the feasibility, only to the tune, the city's gotta step, step this up. Yes, it's their street, they've got to step this up. And I thought about, because the meeting I just came from, we're talking about renovating Daytona and Beach Street and all this. Well, I've got news for you, if any of those people had pulled in and got gas, where I got gas, they'd never come back. I mean, and I don't say that, you know, I was like, "Oh, my gosh, oh, my goodness." So, it's, I'm willing to look at it, I guess, I really am, but we've got to have the cities there with us, they've got to own this, and I'm not saying what they're doing now is right, I, that's just...
I think the complicated part is the short-term and long-term solution.
Right.
I think we all kinda, you know, the idea of Volusia Safe Harbor is more of a long-term solution. The problem it's become is that without having a short-term solution, I think that the sides, they're getting stronger on both ends, are only going to get stronger and fight it more in the short term, so I don't want to kill the long-term solution, because we can't find some sort of short-term solution. And even if it's the vehicle aspect, if it's a nighttime tent city, if it's something to get, it's hard, because every community in the United States, for the most part, is dealing with this issue. And I've yet to see the silver bullet, I mean, you don't, they're everywhere, so different. And some of it you'll never fix, it's, you won't. But right now isn't working. So, you know, I can meet with Jim and talk to him, and meet with Jim Chisholm, and talk to him, but finding a short-term solution that involves somewhat of bathrooms, somewhat of some, some sleep, I think would help. If some of these people could get a safe night's sleep, that would make a difference during the day. If people sleeping in the bushes, pooping in the bushes, that are scared, fighting, getting beat up, I mean, some of them are doing it on purpose, but a lot of them are not. So, unless you get that aspect of it, there will be this continual cycle. It's not the fix-all, but at least it will hopefully alleviate some of the issues we're dealing with now. The only thing I think of is maybe meet with Jim and Jim, and try to come up with some sort of short-term, cheap solution, possibly using facilities we already own, on both sides. I don't know, unless you have a different take.
Mr. Daniels wanted to chime in here real quick.
If Mr. Daniels has something...
All right, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, and I mean this in the right way. Now, this is what I deal, this is what you deal with. This is real. And what he's talking about is they want, now people are just going in circles, and I think that's what he's turning to, is they want an, they want something done, and that's why people are turning to us. Now, the reality is that, based on my experience, you're right, see, it has to be a two-way street.
It does.
And right now, right now, they're moving people, but there's no thought to where this is going, okay? Josh came to me, lots of concerns, I told him he better off bringing it up here. You came to me, that's the first time you ever called me where you were like, making no bones about it, that this was very unacceptable, that this, you even felt endangered there. Well, the bottom line is, what do we do? I only know one answer if you're talking about reality, and that is, you're looking for what you're talking about, Josh, and it's, and it's an expenditure money, it's not an outrageous amount, but we'd have to look at what it costs. But what you're talking about is allowing people a safe area at night, as like a place to camp. Now, the problem, that's, that's really what you're talking about.
A home camp.
Yeah, but here's, because they have to be able to go somewhere. I dealt with this in Dayton. We moved, my cops moved people, but we had a downtown shelter, a building, okay? Where, where it was downtown. And when it was downtown, here was the key, it had, and that's what I've been trying to tell people, we could make it work because it was walkable. When you told people to go there, there wasn't no excuse, they could walk there, okay? So, what you're looking at is something that they can go to at night. Now, this doesn't solve your issue during the day, but it's a different issue.
And I thought of Votran, just because it's covered and it has a bathroom, that's the only, and it's closed at night.
Yeah, you only probably, yeah, you have to watch how that works, so that we don't inflict issues with Votran, but let me make this clear.
Safety issues too, with that population that uses it.
Here's what you need the city to do, though. If you're talking about someplace, say it's on our property at 250 Beach, it has to be someplace that's relatively reasonable for these people to walk to, and the city has to agree that they'll deal with the fact that they can camp there. Then we can deal with, how much does it really cost? You're talking about putting in some, a couple of porta-johns, and I've been, I've had experience with this shower type thing. Will it work in the interim period for a chunk of that population, especially if the goal is to get people off the street, so they're not scaring people, they're not interfering with patrons? We're getting our first complaints at the Ocean Center, by the way, where people feel, people feel threatened.
I, it's, I agree.
But if you want the police, and I'm gonna tell you something, I really respect when you're a police officer trying to deal with, but you need to be able to tell people, "You can't stay here, but you have to go," there is a place you can go. Could we work on something like that, if the council wanted to? If you all told me, "You know what, we gotta do something," okay, because it is the interim solution. And I think that's what some of the ministers are saying. I've got comments back on our homeless thing with the families and kids. Two programs in my whole life I worked on, and got no complaints so far. The Reef Program, which is exceptional, and this thing with homeless kids and families. Everybody told me we're on the right page with that. So, the point is, this is a different strategy for that, but I need, here's what I need. I'd have to come back and tell you what it would cost. You'd have to agree you want to do this, okay? But the city would have to agree, because it's gonna be in close proximity in the city. It will not work if you say, "We'll put the tent city out by Indian Lake." They ain't going there, okay? So, if you say to me, "Jim, we gotta do something. I've had some experience, I can look at this, I think Josh's points are well-taken, it is bubbling over worse than we've seen it before." You saw the picture in the paper, because we've actually looked at, and you could even do this with, if you allow people to camp there, we even looked at fencing off that area, because I've had some security issues with our own people and vehicles on 250. I can work all that out. It wouldn't be the end of the world, it would be an expense. But you'd have to have a relationship with the city, where, because I can tell you a lot of times, you tell cities you're gonna do this, they're gonna freak out. They ain't gonna want you to, to basically authorize a camping zone. But if they don't, I don't know what your answer is, because what you're asking for, honestly, Josh, that's what you're asking for.
That is, it's a safe zone at night, so they can sleep and go to the bathroom.
And I'm Mr. Practical.
Or they're gonna sleep in your business's front porch.
Now, there are issues with how you do this, so that it's not scary to them and not scary to anybody else, okay? And that, you can actually do it with some minimal security, and as long as there are police. See, the beauty of it is, if, say, you're able to do this, and everybody knows that this is our interim solution, they can camp there, well, then the police then know that that's where they can tell them to go, and then the police can help me by making sure they go by and stuff like that.
But it's code enforcement too during the day, Jim, we've got to send the message, this has to stop.
But it's, but it's two issues. It's, you have to be clear, it's a daytime issue and then a nighttime issue. The nighttime issue is different than the daytime issue.
But they've gotta go, they've gotta go hand in hand, for the, the community to get, if we're gonna get buy-in from the community...
You have to...
We've got to clean it up by day if we think we're gonna fix it at night.
Yes, yes, yes.
Because it'll get worse during the day, if we don't do that. It's, it's got, we've got to strike that balance.
Now, one thing you might be able to do, if you came up with a program like that, because, so it's not all Daytona Beach, okay? Because a lot of people, they claim Daytona Beach, they could be coming from anywhere. You remember how we asked the cities to get involved? Well, I still think the Safe Harbor thing has lots of flaws, and unless they come together, that's an enormous investment they have to come across. If they don't do that, though, here's what we haven't asked them, I'd be willing to do this, is if the city would agree with us, Josh, that, and we would try to maybe help on the nighttime stuff, maybe we'd use one of our areas, okay, maybe 250 Beach, okay? Then they have to agree that's where they would go, then I would ask, we could, we could make the pitch with the city, why don't the suburban communities, then in something, give them something to help offset some of the cost for keeping this up and keeping things clean. You see what I'm saying? In other words, let them, let them at least give something, maybe they could help, and we could that way get them involved. But you're gonna have to get them involved, I mean, they haven't wanted to. You know, a lot of cities said they don't have a problem.
We could just open a tent city in every city in Volusia County on...
Do you know what, you know where this issue belongs?
It's a joke, but I think you'd get a lot of...
This issue belongs with the elected leaders' roundtable, and not just for discussion, but for actual input, instead of just having lunch and everybody going, "Uh-huh, uh-huh, uh-huh, uh-huh." We actually talk about an issue and get some input.
Well, I'll tell you what, I think, here's what, once again, this is how things work. The, the way you could accomplish that is if you let me figure out what a minimal budget is, that you would know what it would cost, as some, some money that's coming from us from a social service side. If they knew there was some fund, and it can't be just enormous amount of money, but some fund that would take care of the basics, then you would, you could have a dialogue, because you put up your part and said, "Well, we'll do something." Then, then it's on them to help you. But, but here's the thing, I need to know if the council wants to go down this path, because there's pros and cons to it, but right now, Josh, you want an answer from me? I've been doing this a long time, that's the best interim answer I can think of.
I agree, this is a short-term...
I know Mr. Daniels had something to say, I didn't mean to go on that long, but...
That's okay. Because I agree with most everything you said, and I agree with most everything Mr. Wagner said. I'd like just to bring up a couple of additional things, and that is this, is that a lot of the problems with Daytona are regulatory issues, that they have not been willing to help themselves. And until they're willing to help themselves, then, you know, it is just gonna be a constant problem and a black hole for money. You know, Daytona has been hollowed out over the years, the people who used to live there have moved. It has made it a comfortable spot for homeless people, for drug addicts, for prostitutes. The beachside's full of them, all around the Ocean Center's full of them. And that's why the, the Ocean Center is really beginning to have difficulty now. It was, it's always been something that was mentioned, but they're beginning to lose conventions because of it. Nobody wants, we can't upgrade. We can't get any business convention to come here because of it. They're not gonna show up and deal with that stuff, they're just not gonna do it. So, it is really beginning to get, it's getting worse and worse, and it's getting worse for, I think, several reasons. One of them is, and I don't know if this is still true, but I talked to a police officer as soon as the Daytona Beach police officers got body cams, and he said they were told, you know, by a lower-level officer, not by a Chitwood certainly, that, "Look, from now on, you don't mess with the homeless, and you don't mess with gangs. There's no way you're gonna look good on that camera messing with the homeless and messing with gangs. No way you're gonna look good, it's gonna end your career, don't do it." I don't know if that is something that has contributed to the problem, but perhaps it has. But one thing that definitely has contributed to the problem, and I know I'm probably gonna get strung up by the time I get home for saying this, is on the beachside in particular is holding Bike Week on Main Street, which should be a residential neighborhood. What's happened is, is over the years, with Bike Week on Main Street, the residents have moved out, and all you do have over there is drug addicts, prostitutes, drug dealers, people of that ilk, people who make the homeless feel good, people who look worse than the homeless in all likelihood, people who are killing the tourism industry over there. Until Daytona begins to revitalize and take seriously, the residents over there, nothing's gonna happen, you know. I spent all that time over there trying to do something with Beach Streets, where I learned my, my lesson, and, you know, it always was this, you know, developers would come in, look at it, and said, "Look, you know, we can't do anything here, anybody lives here." You know, what we do is, we draw a circle, we see who lives there. We, we count the number of people, we see what their educational level is, we see what their income level is, we see how old they are, and we make a decision. You, you got nothing. Went to retailers to see if you could, you know, go one step below and get them to do it, same thing, you know, just not happening, not with the lack of the residential base over there, it is just not happening. And it invites that kind of crime, it invites that kind of person to, to come in and be a part of that community. The code enforcement, code enforcement virtually nonexistent. There has been a tendency in Daytona to not want code enforcement in certain areas of the city, and you cannot have code enforcement some places and strict code enforcement other places, so code enforcement is nonexistent. I gathered that, and this is again, a rumor, do not know if it's true, that the, you know, given the financial trouble Daytona is in, that they really do have trouble making the street-level bus of drug dealers, that they know on the beachside in particular where all the drug houses are, but, you know, making a case is very expensive, they don't have the money to do it. You know, it's very difficult for them to be able to pull it off. And you gotta wonder, you know, what good is it gonna be anyway if the neighborhood is not gonna improve? If the middle class is not gonna move back, how is it gonna improve? What difference is it really gonna make? The, in, in talking about the homeless in general, and, you know, the mayor's roundtable, of course, the meeting we have at the airport is not quite the same thing as the committee meetings, but the committee meetings that we have held at the city of Daytona Beach, Chisholm in attendance, has been largely to the effect that, I don't know if he's completely, he, has been largely to the effect that we brought in Randy Croy, Ray Salazar, Chet Bell, to come in and explain what would be necessary to make this kind of homeless shelter work. And I think their, their ideas are substantially at variance with the ideas promulgated by Safe Harbor. That, I don't want to speak for them, but I think that they, my general impression is that none of them think that people would stay out at Safe Harbor for five minutes, that they would be on the way back in, it would not make any difference at all, it is not going anywhere. They're firm believers in housing first, but, you know, you do need a place for people to go and then send them off from there. I do think that the, the thing that kills Holly Hill, the thing that, or makes them really angry, the thing that makes Daytona Beach residents really angry, is the idea that you've got a permanent shelter there, and you're gonna have these herds of homeless walking through the neighborhood every day. Now, what you've got is, you know, I don't know how you do it, I don't, you probably get federal funding for this. If you have a program where you're going to diminish the number by pursuing some sort of program like Housing First, and they realize that this is a temporary thing, maybe they can live with it. But it's one of the, but I agree with them, I mean, I'd be pretty angry myself if this was gonna be an everyday occurrence, but if what you're doing is actually trying to make this work, then that would be something different. You know, and ever since I've been on the mayor's roundtable, I've been trying to come up with a good reason to come back to this kind of council and say, "We need to spend more money on the homeless, we need to contribute money to operations, we really need to get involved in this." But the more I looked at it, the more my personal belief began that Safe Harbor is a dead end, and I could not in good conscience ask any of you to contribute any more money to it. That we've got to find another model, that we've got to do something different. But we've really got to do it in Daytona, because it is really getting bad. One final thing, and I'll shut up. The person that first talked to me about this was Jack White over in Daytona. And, you know, Jack said, you know, "The homeless are really a problem here, we really do need to do something about them." But you know what the real problem is? The real problem is, we don't have anything else. All we got's homeless. And I was thinking, "Oh, well, Jack's crazy, you know, that doesn't make any sense." But then I went up to DC, and I was walking around DC, and a matter of a couple of miles, I got hit by, I don't know, four or five homeless begging for money, I got grabbed by a guy that, by the lapel, saying, "What's the code, what's the code?" And I said, "They didn't tell me." You let me go and walked off. Now, it was not...
Good answer, actually.
It was not scary, because you looked around, and there were all these thirty-something and forty-something people walking around, obviously having money, women with baby carriages, tons of them, tons of them. They had all of these people who lived there, all these residents who lived there, and it made the fact that there was that number of homeless not significant. But if I had been hit by those homeless, those homeless only, if I had not seen those thirty- and forty-year-olds walking around, I'd be thinking, you know, "This place is a death trap." I don't know, it gets down to the regulatory issues, is Daytona really willing to make the decisions that are necessary? And I do think that if we do something, the, perhaps the building you were talking about originally, sounded like a good one to me, and that, but to make it work and to make it politically possible, we're gonna have to find a way to do some sort of Housing First and get them off the street, so it's not a constant herd walking through the neighborhood all the time. Hard, hard deal, but, you know, Chet, Ray, and Randy all think that it's possible, and they know more about the issue than anybody else really around here, they've dealt with it all their lives. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, you, it actually started with this...
Does Jim have the authority to go talk to the city manager about using 250 as a safe zone for a short-term Band-Aid while we talk about it?
Is 250 what...
Beach Street.
250 Beach Street.
The backside of 250 Beach Street's where they're all going. I mean, there's, I mean, Votran, or whatever it may be, I don't really care where it is.
Do they make cake during the day, though?
Yeah, you have to.
Yeah, you'd have to.
Yeah, that's, that's a condition, that's a condition of doing.
They're not enforcing that, they're not doing code enforcement now.
They are, they're, right now, they're resting a lot.
We, it'd be our, it'd be our, it'd be our property, so we would have to make sure people are...
They'd be trespassing.
There's a way to make that part happen, but, but the key is, is that I'm not sure the city's gonna be, I'm not sure they're gonna want this.
I don't think they will. I think you almost just do it.
They, you know, what'll happen is this, is that the, the neighbors around there, as soon as they hear that these people are not gonna be trucked off into the middle of nowhere, are going to be absolutely 100% against it. They're, the misconception that they have is that parking them out there in the middle of the county's gonna do anything. No, it isn't. That is just not gonna do anything at all, they're gonna be back, that's stupid. We will be spending a lot of money building a building that nobody needs, and it's gonna be of no use to anyone. It makes no... It makes no sense. That's the reason why I haven't been back to you guys saying, "This is what we need to do." And, you know, nobody really wanted to push, push Safe Harbor over the edge. I mean, nobody really wanted to say, you know, um, "That's a dead issue. That's not going anywhere." But I had people from the social service agencies that they're counting on to run Safe Harbor tell me, "Kill this thing. It's not going anywhere. It's not gonna do anything. Get rid of it, please. We don't wanna hear about it anymore." There, there's something needs to be done, granted, but this is going nowhere. Kill it. But, you know, it's kinda like pulling wings off a fly, you know? People have put their dreams in it, you know, um...
Well, I think in essence, Safe Harbor has been killed by the lack of... I mean, we still have the memo in place, but no one wants to contribute.
They're not gonna contribute.
It's almost not passing for lack of emotion. I mean, it's just...
Yeah.
Nothing's being done. So, what I'm saying is...
Well, that's how you kill things in government, you know, to fund it.
But in the meantime...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we do this? Why don't we? Because I do think it's more of political, Josh, than it is anything else. What if, if, if the council's willing to consider looking at some alternative, which would cost us some money for this nighttime stuff? You could decide on whether you want to empower Josh to talk to them, to talk to the mayor or somebody over there to see if, what the city will do and how they'll take it, and do they, are they interested?
Here, here's the only thing, though. And, and I think what Daytona has done, and you're right, has pushed the envelope and forced the issue by closing everything down because Safe Harbor hasn't taken...
They brought us in the fight.
They brought us in. So, and to, to that end, this, this is politics at its best. It's a chess game. And they just made a, a move and have just heightened this whole issue. They have. The City of Daytona has done this. So, the only way this is gonna work is if they open everything else up, that they've closed down and put those benches back. I mean, because then, then, then what's gonna happen? Then what are they gonna do? And then come back to the county and say, "Oh, gee, you have to fix it. Look what's happened." Well, yeah, you, you push on this, you're gonna get that. They're getting the exact reaction out of us that they have set up. They've done it.
I agree. But here's the issue. We can't close the library bathroom, and we can't close the 250 bathroom open to the public. Go to the library right now. You bring a, bring one of your grandkids to City Island Library right now and make sure it's a, you know, one of your grandkids, it's, let's say you have a ten-year-old boy, and he has to go in the, the men's bathroom. Feel safe, you feel, sending him in there. You won't, you'll leave.
So, what I'm saying is...
I, I bet you in and out of him.
I, I, I'm willing to talk, but only if they perform and, and, and reverse what they've done.
But my point is, is I think, you can see, this is not... I'll, I'll, I'll try to help, but I gotta have some direction. I actually think that the best way is for you to say that it's okay for Josh, representing you, to talk to, like, their mayor or something because it's a political decision. If, if they say they're willing to talk to us, and then, then we can have some discussion. I, I can't have a discussion with the manager.
We, we need to open up the dialogue.
You know, everything needs to be on the table. And, you know, if you're talking about putting back benches, just don't put them back in front of the Ocean Center. Leave those, you know, those... I understand that, that, uh, Chisholm got in a lot of trouble for taking away those, um, benches. His best thing he's done, sailed the Ocean Center a long time.
He's, he's got another issue. If you put the bus benches back, you now have to make them all ADA compliant.
But we can't solve all of it.
But that's not the problem. I, I'm saying we go, yeah, this is...
That's not our issue, I don't even...
Right, now, we need to see where we're gonna go.
Yeah.
In the next five minutes, make a decision. Do you want Josh to do something, or you want Jim? What, what are we gonna do? I mean, we certainly...
Open the discussion. I'm all on it.
And I'm only trying to find a nighttime solution.
Yeah, Josh.
I can't cure the world. I'm just trying to...
Yeah, Josh has started the dialogue.
And that's what we're trying to do, right? We, we don't have the answer to that, didn't that?
Josh has started the dialogue with, uh, the mayor, I guess.
I called him a couple of days ago.
And, uh, if he can get Mr. Chisholm to contact Mr. Danine, let's start working the dialogue. Let's get this thing together. I think the interim answer, you know, this is an interim solution for a long-term problem, but we've got, just the journey of a million miles begins with that first step, and this is it.
I'd like to hear the rest of council's thoughts on this, though.
When you gotta go to the bathroom, you gotta go. And so, what are you gonna do?
I, I really think we're all believing in Santa Claus here, that there is a solution. And, you know, I...
I think I had the floor, Mr. Patterson.
I'm sorry.
I think the answer for us today is, uh, we, we can't solve it. We cannot solve. It's, it's greater than the seven of us. Unless we can have some dialogue with, with the city, it's a problem for the business folk in Daytona Beaches. I mean, it's a problem for all of us. So, for us to, somewhere, someone has to start talking. And if it's gonna be Josh and, and the manager, let's go there. Let's see if there's anything that they can put their heads together with the Daytona Beach city folk to see if they want to do something. If not, it's, it's gonna land, we're gonna take care of them because they're going to jail, and you're gonna have to pay for that. You're gonna arrest them for, for vagrancy. And so, you pay there. So, but we have to do something, but we can't solve that today. So, you brought it to us, Josh. I think that we need more information as to some ideas or some possible solutions other than Safe Harbor, apparently, that is, uh, not moving. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. J.
Uh, Mr. Patterson, you wanna talk about Santa Claus?
I think I made my point there. I, I know I go over to City Island once a month for a study group that I meet with, and, uh, it is, it's... There's a line of people, you know, and I know they're all out over there buying vegetables, or they're coming in to read a book or read a newspaper. You know, I... Having had an uncle that was a homeless guy for millions of years who showed up at our doorsteps, I came to realize there was nothing you could do with him. Nothing. It, it's, it's a, it's something that, I don't know, that, that there, you know, it just... It's amazing that, to me, to have people living this way, but I think it's a choice. And if you're gonna put something on Beach Street, you're gonna have to go over and put something over on the beachside because they're not gonna walk or go for it. I think the ones that end up in jail are the ones that have medical issues, and we're gonna end up paying for them, you know, because they show up. And they, they, they know where they can get a free operation or get well, you know, get themselves well, and then they're back out of it again. But I, I, you know, I, I, I drive, the other day, I drove by Nova and saw that huge police station just sitting there, empty. Huge building, just vacant over there. I mean, the city could've done something with that. They could, they, if they're picking people up and bringing them all the way up to the county jail, they could pick them up and bring them right over to Nova. And they, they could put some cots in there, clean it up a little bit, some bathrooms.
That should be part of the discussion. That's a really good point.
Huh?
That's a really good point for discussion.
It's been talked about. I mean, I guess that what I was asking the council was, I think step one is this band-aid of just trying to find a safe place at night. I think that's step, step one. And that's because there's poop all over Beach Street. It's just bad. Two is finding, and I made this call on Tuesday, is seeing that there's no action on Safe Harbor. I noticed it. Nothing is happening. What is another solution that may, and this was my concern, it may only include the involvement with the City of Daytona Beach? I'm just seeing what's happening. No one else wants to be involved. So, what I was thinking is, if we said we had this money set aside to do it, we just do it in a different capacity and try to address the issue. Because if not, we pay for it at the jail. So, it's, there's two separate issues. One is the band-aid because I think something has to be done now. But we have to continue the conversation, finding a solution that isn't Safe Harbor if the cities aren't gonna do it. Someone has to get them off their, their behind, right? I mean, am I the only one seeing it?
Well, but if, but if, but if we, if we looked at what, because we were willing to put some money up for the Safe Harbor project, if we were willing to put some money up to help the City of Daytona Beach retrofit that old building over there, that's close, but I, but I know what's gonna happen. There are people that are gonna say, "Not in my neighborhood, not in my backyard." Or, or they're gonna be the, the nope crowd, and "Not on planet Earth." I want this to happen.
I'm never doing this, it's good.
But that, that to me, I, it, it just keeps coming back to, it seems like the biggest problems in Daytona Beach. I, I haven't heard a lot. I mean, Orman hasn't said they had a problem. Deland has somewhat of a problem, but I know places where they are staying out in the woods. And I know, have a friend that he knows that they're on some property he has, and he just kinda says, "Well, as long as you don't bother me, I'm not gonna bother you." And, uh, but I don't think you're gonna, you could, you could take an empty 250 and make a homeless shelter out of it. It's, they're still gonna be doing the things that you say they're doing out there in the streets.
It's not gonna change anything.
It's not gonna change it.
It's not, but, and here's the thing, though, Josh, too. We haven't set aside money for Safe Harbor. And the managers may, always made a point with it. There's no money set aside for that. It would have to be found or taken from something else. But, you know, there's another partner in this that has been very vocal and holds community-wide, county-wide meetings on this, and that's the faith organization. I think they need to be at the table. Maybe, um, maybe they would be willing. They have a church somewhere that's open. I mean, if this is really, uh, an important issue, you know, because, especially in the faith community, I, you know, that, that's, uh, probably feeding the homeless and, and the orphans and the widows falls right under that mission statement, if you will. So, I think we would be amiss not to involve them in this conversation and see what they are, instead of just having meetings and rallies, to see what they are willing to come to the table with, because there's 33 of them, I believe. And, um, you know, see what kind of money, pot of money they have put away all these years to come to the table to help fund this. I think, where, where did the point of making it happen? And if you're not gonna be part of the solution, stop having the rallies in a band we attend, and, and nothing comes from it. So, I think we're at the point, if we're gonna have this discussion, they need to be there, and we need to see what they're bringing to the table.
I, I was in, um, Parkersburg, West Virginia earlier this year. And I came across, and there was signs that the mayor of Parkersburg had put up in Parkersburg, West Virginia. It said, "Please do not contribute to the drug and alcohol problems by contributing, by giving money to panhandlers." I didn't see anybody. I didn't see a one panhandler in it. They, they weren't arresting them. They didn't have to because they signed.
Code enforcement. Code enforcement works.
I think, no, I think maybe Mr. Mr. Patterson's hit on, hit on a, a true cause. See, you see, we, we, this is a knee-jerk reaction. We wanna cure the problem. But first things first, step one of a 12-step process, you gotta identify the problem. Why are they here? Why do people congregate in, in Daytona Beach? Let's talk about the white elephant in the room. Why are they there? Their services are there. They've got the, the soup kitchen. How many times you go down, uh, over there by, uh, on, on Ridgewood Avenue? You drive by that, uh, by where they got the soup kitchen there? Thousands of people lining up the streets, coming there for the free food, coming there. Why are they on City Island? Because there's a place to lay down and sleep. Has anybody driven down and stopped? I actually stopped at one of our beach parks, uh, off-beach parking zones, the splash park over there by the, by the, the, the lifeguard center one night. Because I saw all these lights everywhere. I was like, "What's going on here?" So, I, the door, the gate was open. I just pulled right in and I parked. So, you would not believe the craziness that's going on on our off-beach parking lots because it's dark, homeless people are there. You got everything in the world that I will not address on this microphone going on. They're there because the venues are there, because the services are there. That's why they're here. It's not because they came here and said, "Oh, I wanna go, I'm homeless, I'm gonna go to Daytona." They go, "Oh, I'm homeless. I'm going to Daytona because it's warm. I don't have the, the inclement weather, and I can get food and maybe housing, and I can panhandle, I can get money." There's our problem.
So, do we have any direction for today?
Today's direction is, as I've, I've heard around, let's, let Josh, he's been having a dialogue with the mayor, discuss the matter with the mayor, see if he can get the two city manager and the county manager, those two managers together. Let's see if we can come up with some sort of temporary fix of the, just a safe night place, like a camp. And, uh, and, and that they can go to and we can make happen.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. The, uh, the faith group, I've met with them a number of times, as I know Joyce has, and I know, uh, Josh has. And what they've been sold is a bill of goods on, uh, a jail diversion program that is just not gonna work. That is the problem there. I think that they would shift off and be fine with something different. Now, as far as whether or not it would work, uh, Jacob Stewart, uh, the former 30-year head of the Department of, the, the Chamber in Orlando, and, um, now the, uh, lead dog in the, um, the homeless effort over there says that their success rate in getting the hardcore homeless that we're talking about off the street permanently is 87% using Housing First. So, there is solutions. There are solutions. The problem with Daytona is Daytona is so rundown. It is so seedy. It, it attracts homeless people. And to turn Daytona around is 10, 20-year operation. It just is. You know, and, but Daytona will never start. It will never make the, the hard decisions necessary to get itself going. That is the fundamental problem. Thank you.
Okay, well, but we do have a direction now, right? We gotta find a, a solution. See, that's how you started the conversation. We'll let you continue.
I'll talk about the short term.